Hello from the Crawford Family Forum in Pasadena and welcome to our discussion on the upcoming election for the District 6 seat on the Los Angeles Unified School Board. I'm Kyle Stokes. I'm the senior reporter covering K-12 education for KPCC, Public Radio, and LAIST. We are a member-supported nonprofit news source for Southern California and we rely on your memberships, your donations, to power our newsroom. So become a member right now at laist.com/donate. That's L-A-I-S-T dot com slash donate. And this live conversation is a part of our voter game plan, which is our newsroom's guide to help you get ready for the upcoming elections in November and to make an informed decision when you vote. And you can read that guide right now at laist.com/vote. This game plan includes voter guides to three dozen different state, federal, and local races in LA County, including the two school board runoffs for the LA Unified School Board. And the school board races in LAUSD, if you heard our event last night, you heard me say this as well, they are so crucial. These are the most consequential school board elections in the United States. LA is the largest city in the US with a directly elected independent school board. In cities like New York and Washington DC and Chicago, it's essentially the mayor that controls the school system there. But the people who are in charge of whether more than half a million young people in Los Angeles are learning are the elected members of the seven-member LAUSD Board. And each of them represent a different board district. Yesterday, I spoke with the candidates for Board District 2, which stretches from East LA into Los Feliz in a virtual event just like this one. And you can find video of that event on our LAUSD page of the voter game plan that I just mentioned. But today, we are talking about the second LAUSD race on the LAUSD ballot. That's for voters in Board District 6. And that district covers much of the east San Fernando Valley, from Silmar to Sunland to Hunger, and from Panorama City to Sun Valley and down to North Hollywood east of the 170 freeway. There are two candidates who hope to represent that district. One of them is here at our studios. Marvin Rodriguez, excuse me, Marvin, has been a public school teacher for the last 18, going on 18 years now, including the last nine at Cleveland High School in LAUSD. And before he entered the classroom, Rodriguez was a Marine Combat Veteran, serving in Kuwait and Iraq in 2003. And Marvin has two daughters in LA Unified. Also running is Kelly Gones, who is the incumbent board member for Board District 6. And she's running for reelection. She's a former teacher and a US Department of Education staffer under the Obama administration. She was elected in 2017. We invited Kelly Gones to participate in tonight's forum, and she declined our invitation. So before we dive in, quick word about format. We are going to have a conversation for most of the next hour. And if you have questions for Marvin as well, you can drop them into the Q&amp;A box just to the side of your screen as you're live streaming here. But we are going to start here with, we're going to end with two minutes of closing statements for Mr. Rodriguez. And he is also going to start with a quick opening statement. 60 seconds for you to give sort of your elevator pitch answer to this question. Why, Marvin, are you running for the LA Unified School Board?
My name is Marvin Rodriguez. I am an LAUSD teacher. I'm a proud parent of two girls who attend LAUSD schools. And I'm also a Marine Combat Veteran. When I came to this country in 1986, I was blessed to have teachers who provided for me the welcoming environment that allowed me to fall in love with education. Now that I, my 18 years of teaching, that has been my goal for my students, to provide welcoming and nurturing environment so that they feel part of the community in the classroom. So what I have to teach them is meaningful to them. And that's why I'm running for school board. Because during the pandemic, as I looked into the screen and saw the faces of some of my students, I realized that I could only do so much for them as a teacher, and I wanted to do more. And I want to do more not only for my students, but I want to do more for my fellow teachers and parents. I want to engage them so that together, we can find and we can deliver the meaningful learning opportunities for our students to feel confident and be inspired to believe that their relationship with the schools and their communities in a positive way is always possible. And that's why I'm running for school board.
Thank you, Marvin. All right. First question for you is, the most important job that a school board member has is to manage the LAUSD superintendent, who right now is Alberto Carvalho. But he reports to you, whoever holds that position, reports to the seven-member elected board. The board hires him, they can fire him, and they do his job evaluation. So after eight months, how would you rate the performance of the current superintendent, Alberto Carvalho?
Well, I would say that, for the most part, the superintendent has said all the right things. And does it, do those things give the appearance of being well-intended? Of course, right? There have been some missteps that the superintendent has had. One of them, I think, was the unilateral decision to declare four acceleration days, right? And I thought that was a misstep because when he unilaterally made that decision, he forgot that we work for communities, we work for students. And what he could have done was engaged those communities and asked them for input as to what they needed, what they wanted. You've got to talk to parents, you've got to talk to members of the community, even students. So I think that was, that was a misstep. Because when you unilaterally make decisions like that on behalf of people, especially our communities, our most vulnerable communities, what you are saying to them, and the message you are sending to them is, I'm here to save you. And our communities do not need saving. Our communities need people, they need leaders to come into our communities and are willing to work with them and be part of those experiences, part of those struggles that our communities have. And if we are willing to do that, our communities are going to buy into whatever it is that you're trying to sell them. So I do agree that the superintendent has come in and he has said all the right things. And for the most part, he looks like he's, he's got good intentions. But one of those missteps was the acceleration days.
Yeah. And I do want to ask more about the acceleration days. Does that, is that one example, is that the only example of missteps? Are there things that you think he's doing well? I'm trying to get a sense of how you weigh that in the broad, kind of like overall picture of how well he's doing. I hear that you say, he comes in and says a lot of the right things. But does that mean that there are ways that he's actually doing things that you think you agree with or disagree with?
Well, I think he's a, he's a, he's a sound speaker. He's a great speaker. And in hearing him talk, he's very motivational, right? Which is what you need from a leader because you want the people who, who you lead, you want them to get behind you and support you. So I think he does a good job, especially when we, when we talk about the strategic plan. And one of the things he does is a call to action, right? Where he calls not only himself and the leadership, but he calls everyone in the district to action. And I think that, that, that's a good, a good plan for him to make sure that he's inspiring us teachers especially. Of course, I believe he has to do more for teachers. But, but I think, for starters, that's good.
So on this specific point of the acceleration days, this obviously huge news in the district yesterday. I mean, there was a lot of news in, in our community yesterday, but in this meeting might have gotten lost in the shuffle. But the idea of acceleration days was essentially, right in front of the school board yesterday, there was a deal, as you well know, with the teachers' union, a compromise about when to schedule those days. They were moved from kind of random Wednesdays, as critics called it, to during the spring and winter breaks is when these acceleration days are going to be held. And just so that everyone's using common terms here, these are days that are extra and optional for students and for teachers. But teachers who show up get paid. The idea is that students who show up will get extra seat time with their teachers. And, you know, to the point of like a call to action, what Superintendent Carvalho said yesterday is, this was a call to action. I'm the, you know, essentially, like, I'm the leader of the school district. There's, you know, a lot of evidence that more seat time is exactly what students need. And so I did what the evidence said you do when you've got a bunch of students who are behind. And he, and said, we're going to have extra days of school. What's wrong with that? What's wrong with that idea of him standing? I mean, that's the, that's a call to action. Isn't it, doesn't it then fall to the, the system to then respond to that call and say like, yeah, how do we make this work?
It is a call to action. But I also think that you have to, the way you deliver it, right? Again, like I said earlier, you have to inspire people to get behind you, right? The superintendent calling on us, a call to action, yes. But also, call on, talk to the members of the community, talk to your teachers, ask them for input. That'd be the ideal thing to do, right? And you, I know you mentioned, there were random days, right, in the middle of November?
That was what critics would, would call them, is these random Wednesdays that were during the school, the regular, you know, weeks. It was like, but yeah, that was what critics said.
And more seat time, which is, I disagree with more seat time. And I think, I mean, it all depends what that seat time looks like. Because if we're going to have our kids in the classroom and do academic after academic and expose them to more academic rigor, I don't know if that is the answer, per se. I think what our kids are looking for, especially coming out of the pandemic, is more opportunities to build relationships with one another, right? Not only with, with each other, but also with, with teachers and, and parents. So why don't we use those four, those four days instead of using them for more seat time where we are talking to our students about more, more academics? Why don't we use that to bring our kids together and provide learning opportunities with enrichment? We could do so with, you know, arts. We could do so with music. We could do so with, during after-school programs that are going to get kids to buy into, right, to buy into the opportunities we are trying to sell to them. I know there's research that, especially when we talk about our most vulnerable students, there's research that's been done on, on at-risk youth, right? I think it was, it's called, I can't remember the name of the research, but it, it was a research held in the state juvenile system, right? And they, what that, what that study found was that kids tend to buy in to the academic you are trying to sell them. When you combine within those academics, right, empowerment, and you combine with them a sense of community, right? And you combine with them culturally relevant learning experiences. So I think we could have done that instead of just saying, oh, here you go, random days without a plan. Because it looked like it came out of a plan. It looked like, I need, I need people to, to think that I'm doing something, so I'm going to, I'm going to unilaterally do this. But he could have...
Do you think that this represents, does this signal that the school district is thinking that perhaps Superintendent Carvalho himself is thinking about this challenge in the wrong way? I mean, you know, because there is this huge challenge. The test scores that LAUSD recently received indicated that, you know, you know, there was a drop in overall, you know, number of students who were passing English Language Arts and Math tests. You know, these were the first rounds of tests that we got since the pandemic, you know, since the pandemic's onset. And, you know, so there is this kind of question of like, how far do kids have to go? How much ground do they have to make up? And the acceleration days was one prominent answer to that question. This is how. We're going to, you know, do the, again, that was their point, is more seat time. Do you think that that represents this whole saga of the acceleration days reflects that the district isn't thinking about learning loss, you know, to use that phrase, in the right way? And is not conceiving of how to tackle that problem in the right way?
Well, it's common for the district to be very reactive, right? We, we only come up with decisions after the fact. But coming out of the pandemic, we knew our students were struggling. When they came back into the classroom, we knew that, we knew, the test scores are only telling us what we already knew, right? So instead of being reactive, why don't we, why are we more proactive? And before we start trying to rush our students? Because in my opinion, I think what our students need is a little bit of patience. Because our students are struggling to meet the demands of us adults. Because us adults have, have told them already, hey, we're going to demand for you this, this, and this, and that. And our kids are rushing to, to please us because that's what they do. They want to please the adults in their life. But that's not the answer. The answer is to make sure we figure out what it is that our students really need so that when we are going to expect them to deliver for us academically, we've provided those, those services, whether they are social emotional services, right, wraparound services, so that they can deliver for us what we expect from them. Because we have to create the whole child before we demand from them academic rigor.
So as a school board member, you're, you know, you've spent, you know, your career on the ground in schools. You're the school board member. You want to create that culture. You're doing that from, you know, the perch overseeing a constituency the size of like a US congressional district. And it's a huge, you know, swath of constituency that you have to represent in that role. How do you create that from your perch at an executive level of the school district?
I think it's very important for leaders in, in the district to start leading by example. But I think, I think we have to, we have to find leaders that are leading with, with honesty and courage. Because we are making decisions on our, on behalf of our children, and we are expecting them to be these human beings when they're older. But at times, we are failing to model that for them. And I think we would be better served from our leadership if we started behaving in the manner in which we want our students to behave. So I think it's a question of leadership and taking ownership of your actions as a leader, right? Because the way you behave as a, as a leader, especially as an adult in general, right? The way, the power we have to, to influence how our students view us, right? There's that power, and we have to recognize that. And that takes a certain level of leadership and maturity to recognize and say, hey, you know what, maybe what our students need right now is not, say, we uber-focus on the academics. Maybe what our students need now is for us to create relationships with one another, us adults. Create relationships with one another so that when we try to find solutions for them, we do so as a team.
I hear your point about modeling good behavior and modeling strong relationship building. You're acting at the level of policy if you're elected to the school board. So what's the policy you can implement to get to that level of, you know, you're talking about holistic services and a system that kind of wraps its arms around socioeconomic, you know, the sort of like, the, the whole child. How do you do that through policy? Like, what's your plan to do that through policy from, you know, if you're elected to the board?
Well, like I was saying earlier, we, we have to, we have to reach into, into the communities, right? We have to talk to our parents. We have to talk to community members. We have to make sure that, that when, when we are making decisions, we're not just engaging them and say, oh, tell me something you, you need, but I'll pretend that I'm listening to you, and then I'm going to, I'm going to apply. No, no, no. We, we hear our parents and we apply those solutions. Because who knows better what their children need than those parents? And also, when we talk about listening to other people, we also have to talk to our teachers, right? Those are policies that we, policies that we can implement is, you know, we can create policies that empower our teachers a little more, right? That allow our teachers to be those models, as we were talking earlier. And yeah, those, those policies, they're tough decisions. But you have to make them, and you can't be afraid to piss off the people that at times have more influence in your policymaking than the people who are directly affected by it, which is our children, their parents, and our communities.
So I want to remind our viewers that there's a Q&amp;A function on our page that's right next to the screen. You can use that to submit your questions. We're going to leave a little bit of time at the end to answer some of those questions, or at least pose, not, you know, me answer them, but pose them to the candidate who's here hoping to represent Board District 6, Marvin Rodriguez. So we started on this sort of like swing through the, the questions of the acceleration days and how we address academic gaps, you know, sort of spurring off of my initial question about the superintendent's job evaluation. And I asked Kelly Gones her thoughts about this as well, when I spoke with all of the candidates, as I did all of the LAUSD candidates in this race. And we've got a little piece of tape that I want to play from her to sort of kick off this follow-up question here. And when I asked her for her response about Carvalho's job performance, she pointed to Carvalho's strategic plan. So let's play a little bit of sound of her talking about that strategic plan, this big visioning document that she had, that Carvalho has published, talking about his plans for the district.
I think one important step that has been taken is the passage of a strategic plan for the first time in a long time. I think it's a recognition that the board's most important role is to ensure that students are learning and succeeding and thriving in our schools. And our role as a board is really to set the vision and help ensure that the superintendent and then everyone who reports to him, all 75,000-plus employees, is working towards that same goal in a concerted fashion. So I think it speaks to a unity of the board in recognizing that the urgency of that mission, especially in the wake of the pandemic. But also that we knew that, in addition to finding a leader who was aligned to that vision, we needed to pass the strategic plan so that the work could really begin.
So Marvin, you've been a teacher in LA Unified for years now. You know that the superintendancy, it's been a revolving door. But what Gones is saying here in that tape, I think, is that for the first time since anybody can remember, the superintendent has presented a vision that the current board is willing to also stand up and put their stamp on. The current board and the superintendent are on the same page. And this is, you know, in her view, kind of a new thing. And it's, and, you know, again, this is what her contention is, an unprecedented level of unity. So is a vote for you, a vote against that current sense of unity that the board has expressed feeling? And do you think that, you know, if you're elected, that sense of unity, you know, needs shaking up? Like, what do you make of that argument? Like, we've got a plan now, let us implement it?
I can appreciate, I can appreciate Ms. Gones talking about teamwork and being in line with what the superintendent's vision is for the district. Yeah, we could, we could get behind something like that, especially when you have a strong leader, right, that inspires confidence. We can get, we can get behind a leader like that. And if a vote for me wouldn't mean a vote, wouldn't be a vote against the superintendent's plan, right? A vote for me would be a vote to hold the superintendent accountable for maybe his lapses in reaching out to our communities, to making sure that his policy is not only consistent to creating teams at the leadership level, but is consistent with creating teams at the lower level. Because we need to create a team, a team environment at our school levels with our teachers, with our administrators, with our support staff. We need to create that team environment. So the leadership can be talking about teamwork all they want. But if that has not trickled down to the smaller guys down there, it doesn't mean a thing. Because the people who deliver those things, those policies, are those people, the teachers on the ground. So it has, so a vote for me means we, I keep the superintendent accountable for his lapses in failing to be consistent with the team effort he has at the top, but he has to trickle down to the bottom.
Does that mean that you support what's in the plan? Like, the, the, you know, verbiage of what he's expressed as his vision? Does, like, do you agree with the strategic plan? Do you, and, or is it, it's more his implementation? What I'm hearing is, it's his implementation of it that I question his ability to do. I just want to understand kind of where, what a vote for you would mean in terms of, like, does the strategic plan keep going forward?
I guess it'd be of, of the implementation. But I, I think that he could do a better job at, at making, at, at not unilaterally setting, making decisions. Because, like I said earlier, our communities do not need saving. We need leaders who want to work with our communities. Because our communities want to be, like, they want to feel like they're a part of the solution, right? I don't want you to do the, if you come into, into my community, I don't want you to do the job for me. I want to put my hands in there, and I want to feel empowered that what I'm doing for my community matters too. So I think it's, it's the delivery of that that I think needs to, but I agree. I was stoked when I heard, when I heard the, the call to action, I was like, yeah, call to action.
Call to action on what?
On, on what, on our commitment to our students. A call to action that we must remember that the role we play in the classroom is very important in the eyes of our students. And we have to do it, right, with integrity? And we have to do it with courage.
Do you think that the current board, I mean, this is the other part of my question here, is, do you think the current board is being too deferent to the superintendent? Do you think that they're giving him too much of a free pass? You know, or, or is this like, the board saying, we have, we haven't had a school board, or we haven't had a super, you know, we've lost numerous superintendents over, you know, sort of the, the internal strife and the dynamics on the school board over, over the past decade, you know, and, and like, we need to give this person a chance to make his plan work? So do you think it's, the board is being too deferent and sort of navigating that balancing act of wanting to give the superintendent latitude to do his job, but also, like, do you think that they're navigating that balancing act well?
Well, I think it started when, when Austin Butner, right before he left office during the pandemic, I think they gave Austin Butner a lot of power. So I think they're continuing with that. And I, I think they're, they're, they are giving the superintendent a lot of power. I think where you have to be careful is, as an elected official, how you look, how that looks to the people you represent. How, how maybe the communities you're, you're representing want you to step up a little more and say, you know what, this is not the superintendent's show. This is, like we talked about, this is a team effort. And instead of just allowing the superintendent to unilaterally make those decisions, hey, you become part of the decision-making. And you, and you present that model. You, you show your communities that that's exactly what you're doing.
All right. Let's play another piece of sound from, from the incumbent school board member Kelly Gones. And I asked her about charter schools. These are, as a lot of you already know, independent charter schools, the schools that are run by independent organizations outside of LAUSD. They're overseen by the school district. They need the school board's permission to open. But they're run mostly by nonprofits in, in LA Unified and are out of the district's day-to-day control. And I asked incumbent board member Kelly Gones whether it was the board's job to find ways to shut charter schools down. And we want to play a little bit of audio of her response. Her answer was, it is the LAUSD board's role to hold charters accountable. Let's listen.
We have to ensure accountability around outcomes and really making sure that the charters that we oversee are actually serving students well. And when they're not, absolutely, the, I think the law requires us to take action to make sure that, you know, students aren't harmed by low-quality education being offered. So.
But the number of schools has remained overall the same. And so if it is the district's job to be regulating these schools, why is it that the, that number has remained the same? When there are theoretically these new tools to, like, you know, say to these low-performing schools, you need to get out of the business and let us do the work?
For sure. Yeah. I mean, I, I think that the county and state piece is probably buttressing some of the, some changes in terms of the number of charters within LA Unified. I know that within my district, for example, there were fewer charters than there were when I was elected in 2017. And it, it would be, I think it's one fewer. And there would be a lot fewer if the county appeals process were different, for example. So I think that's one challenge, is that, you know, we have the ability to deny schools renewal based on their performance, and that there's a separate decision-making process that obviously is out of our control at, at the county and then the state level.
All right. So Marvin Rodriguez, who's challenging Kelly Gones for the Board District 6 seat. Four years from now, how many independent charter schools will be operating under LAUSD's oversight? More charters, fewer charters, or about the same number of charters? And why?
Well, in four years, after I've been in, in the school board, I hope it's fewer. Of course, it might be, this, it might be the fact that it's the same. But that doesn't mean we don't hold charters accountable. That means, I agree with, with Ms. Gones, where we have to hold charter schools accountable, especially when they don't deliver on the promises to the expectations our parents and teachers have. I, I think if charter schools were coming into, to our communities to, to provide, to provide services alongside our, our community, not our community schools, our neighborhood schools, it'd be great, right? They're supplementing services and resources for students. right? They're supplementing services and resources for students, but they're not. Charter schools are built to compete. They're built to compete with our schools, and they continue to take the, the resources and services that, especially our schools and our most vulnerable communities, are struggling with. So when you do that, you create the narrative that our schools, our, our neighborhood schools, our public schools are failing our students. And what winds up happening is our communities lose faith in their schools, and what they say is, okay, let the private sector come in and decide what, how to educate our children. But yes, that's exactly why we have to hold charter schools accountable. And I'm, I hope that by the time I am, I have four years in, we see fewer charter schools. Because we have the tools that allows us to do so, right? AB 1505, if a charter school creates a negative fiscal, has a negative fiscal effect on the district and the communities, we're allowed to deny them that charter, right? If a charter school wants to come into our communities, right, we have to have community input. The community has to have, has to have a voice and say, hey, we, we do need a charter school, that's what we want. But that's not the case most of the time. Charter schools come in and they, you know, come in telling our communities, oh, we're here to save you. Like, we talked about that earlier.
We have, we haven't had data on which charters under this state law, which, which makes it easier to shut down a, a school that's officially designated as low-performing. We haven't had the data from the state in several years because of this, the pandemic and because it delayed testing for so many, on which schools technically qualify as low-performing. The last time that they put out that data, there were 22 schools in LAUSD that were listed as low-performing. That's out of 220. So 1 in 10 charter schools is viewed as low-performing. That means there are a lot of others that are actually, like, pretty high-performing schools. So, so like, at least, what do you do about those schools? And how are those, like, what should those schools think about Marvin Rodriguez as a potential school board member if you become, if you're elected?
The low-performing schools?
The high-performing schools, the ones, the sort of, like, bulk of those schools that, at least under the, the, you know, the, the framework of this law, are viewed to be doing fine.
Well, if they're performing at a high level, I, I mean, as a school board member, I can't do too much about that, right? Because they're performing and they are delivering, regardless of what, what I believe that charter schools are built to do to compete, regardless of that, I, I think that they, if they're delivering for our communities and they're delivering the expectation, to the expectation of our community, there isn't much I could do. Because clearly, I can't lean on, on 1505, on AB 1505, to shut them down because they're performing. Now, when it comes to the, how we measure those, those high performances, it's, who is in charge of, of, of saying this charter school is low-performing, this is mid-performing, this was high? I think, is it the state or is the CCSA?
I believe it's the state.
It's the state.
Yeah.
Well, and that's where I, I also agree with, with Ms. Gones when she talks about the, the state and the county. I, I believe that the requirements for a charter school to operate within our communities, within all those three, those requirements have to be consistent, right? If, if, if a district can't deny a charter school, so should the county, so should the state. There should be no inconsistencies in that.
Just to, if a charter school is denied from the LAUSD level, they can always, the, under this deal that was struck with charter operators, you know, a couple of years ago, they can appeal to the county office of education or to the state board of education. And in most cases, those appeals have been overturning of the district's decision to shut down or not renew.
Correct.
Yeah. You, you taught at a charter school a couple of years ago, you know, at the beginning of your career. And I just wonder, like, what are charter school, you mentioned this idea that they're not there to supplement. So like, what are charter schools for? Like, what is the, they're not going away, they're going to be around. And even within the strictures of this law, there is a role that the state has decided charters are going to play. What should that role be? What are those, when you say supplemental services, what do you mean by that? And like, what role is that?
Since we have charter schools here, I wish that, that role, that supplemental role would be almost like a, like a magnet school for our, for our community schools, where the services, where the charter school is not draining resources from the local schools, but rather, they work together and it's another option that kids can have a side of their public school, right? But that's not the case, right? Charter schools, I said earlier, charter schools are meant to compete with our schools. And I think that that's a way for our leaders to, to disregard their, their obligation to make sure that we provide for our students sound, quality, and equitable education. Because all they have to say is, hey, we have to balance budgets, and it's cheaper to run a charter school than it is a regular public school. Which is, you know, sad to hear from, from an official when we're, when he's talking about the communities that are going to be affected by a charter school coming into a vulnerable community. Because now, the schools that you have failed to protect, you're making them even worse, because now you're bringing in charter schools to compete with those. And now you're, now you're leaving more kids behind. So.
Want to, again, plug to our audience, the chat function, put your questions in. We're going to leave it a little time at the end for Q and A with Marvin Rodriguez, who's joined us here. He's running for the BD Six seat on the LA Unified School Board. Let's talk about enrollment, Marvin. LAUSD's enrollment has declined steadily for two decades now. School system now has seven, well, it used to have 700,000 kids back in 2002, well, more than 700,000. It could now serve less than 400,000 as soon as, as next year, according to the district's forecast. And a lot of this is driven by demographic forces. There are huge forces that are beyond the school district's control. But I don't want to ask you about that. I want to ask you about what is within LAUSD's control. Are there reasons that LAUSD families are fleeing the district that are within the district's purview? And, and what changes do you think that LAUSD could make to address those reasons?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Families, students, parents are leaving our neighborhood schools in search of better learning opportunities. And that is something we have control over. And I think what we need to do more of as a district is make sure we deliver, and I talk about this, we deliver those, those learning opportunities for our students so that we create and we build back that trust that parents and students have in our local schools, to want them, to make them, or to inspire them to come back and give schools a chance, and understand that, that there's no better option for them outside of their, their local schools. I know we, we can, the way we deliver these, and I, and I talked, in other forums, I've talked about, pursuing the community school model, which with the wraparound resources, we can deliver these things, these things for our students, these learning opportunities, the support for our families in our most vulnerable communities, we can deliver those things, right? Not only to the people that are, that are already with us, but we can bring the, the people that have left, bring them, bring them back. And I think that's important. And we also have to, have to make sure that, that we have other, other services for, within the community model, we, we have to come up with culturally responsive curriculum that, that it's, well, of course, responsive to the, to the cultural needs of the people we're trying to service. So they buy into what we are trying to deliver.
So just culturally responsive, it's just one of those things that people in education say. What do you mean by that?
What I mean by culturally responsive is, maybe we can create, if we're going to respond to the needs of our communities, maybe we could create dual-language programs, right? Look into our communities. And I know in Board District Six, we have, we can create dual-language programs with Armenian, right? We have Tagalog, we have, we could go with Russian. We, any language that your, that your district has that need, that needs, needs to be met, that is important for our communities. Because that's how they feel, they feel that they are a part of, of the learning community and become part of that.
Yeah. The, the community schools model that you mentioned, you know, we've, I've, I've done, you know, reporting on it, you can find it on las.com, you know, it's, it's very interesting. And you'd visit these schools that have been up and running for years, and it's like, wow, this is amazing. I, I wish that, you know, every school was just like this. And then you, like, hear what it took to make those schools, and it's years of blood, sweat, and tears, and like, lots of difficult conversations. Doing it well involves a fidelity of implementation that is, like, it, it could be, it would be something, you know, I don't know, I don't want to, like, go out and just say that it's extraordinary. It would just be hard. It would be very, very hard, and it would take a lot of time. And we've got this, and the, the enrollment crisis crunches now. So how do you, I, I mean, how does that, can the community schools model solve a, a crisis that might be here now, as opposed to, like, five years from now, when, you know, if we let this trend continue, it, it might be too late to, to sort of talk about community schools as an enrollment decline fix?
I think that, again, going back to being reactive, I think that's the mistake we make. Believing that, that we must act so now because, but, we have to act now, but we have to act with patience. We have to think through this, and we have to understand that it's, that it's going to take, it's going to take a while. Our children deserve our patience, they deserve that commitment. We have to do this for our kids. And that's depressing, that's the pressing emergency here, that our kids need these things, right? And it could be a budget crunch, it could be an enrollment crunch, but the kids that we have now within the school district, they need these things, and they are demanding these things. They're not saying it out loud to you, but, and when you see them in the classroom, that's what they're hungry for. They're hungry for those opportunities.
The, I was just thinking of the proverb, the best time to plant a tree. I don't know if you've heard it, best, it's like either, it was 20 years ago, or it's right now, sort of what is going through my head. Just saying that. That's not a question, but, just, okay, I'll take this, this weird tangent as an opportunity to, again, say, Q and A. Put your questions in the Q and A for Marvin. We will have Q and A at the end. Special education. During last, yesterday's event, Marvin, the, the, you know, the question that we apparently got a lot in our Q and A was about special education and special education services in the district. This is, one out of roughly every six LAUSD students has an identified disability, and they span the gamut from, you know, deaf and hard-of-hearing students to students with, you know, severe mental and physical challenges, to students with dyslexia. The, again, controversial that that even, we've reported on this as well, like, whether these students should be in special education. But that's where they, that's where they, in fact, are. And there were some of these students that thrived in distance learning, as I'm sure you know, but for many, the pandemic was especially hard for these students with disabilities. So what is your plan to improve services for students with disabilities if you're elected to the board?
First off, I, I guess I'd be, I don't know, I guess I'm going to become an advocate for that community. We have to demand that our federal government funds IDEA as it's supposed to be funded. From there, we could extract those funds and make, and use them, use them to deliver, to deliver services to our students, the needed services. We can begin by hiring more personnel for the classroom in support of, of special ed teachers, more special ed teachers, minimize the workload of our teachers that are, that sometimes are overwhelmed, right? We, we can bring more, going back to services, we can also talk about the idea of special ed centers. That is a big thing for me. I, I want to make sure the special ed centers are not closed, and that they provide-
Which has been an issue.
Yeah. They provide the option that, that some of our students need, right? That's, that's, the goal is, I also want to empower parents during the IEP process, right? Make sure that they understand that there are other options for their children, other than just putting them in, into a regular classroom, right? They have options, they have special ed centers, they have special day classes. Empower parents to know those things. And that, I think that would be important for special ed. But the first and more, and foremost would be getting the federal government, demanding, advocating for our communities that the federal government funds the IDEA as it's supposed to.
I mean, this is a longstanding grievance of the school district that I believe this federal government, it covers about 20% of the average cost of a, of a student in special education services. And, and the, the goal is that the federal government covers 40% of the average cost. So that, you know, measured against that benchmark, the district is sure falling short. But there's an issue beyond money and resources, and even whether these, you know, whether, you know, special education centers are open. It's the, the fact that it's such a, it's a, it's a combative process, it's a litigious process. To get those services for students, it often requires hiring a special advocate or a lawyer, and that's a resource that parents don't have access to. Is there anything that, that can be done culturally? You know, and I'm not talking, I'm talking about, like, how do we change, is there anything that you can do from the board level to change that combative nature of the process of special education? Is there any kind of oversight you can provide as a board member that would diminish that a little bit?
I think we have to make sure that we don't see parents and special ed students as, when they come into an IEP and demand those, those resources, we have to stop seeing them as, as the enemy, and begin to see them as members of our learning community that have to, that we have to, whose services we have to meet. And we have to meet in a compassionate manner. I think that's what needs to happen at the leadership level. Making sure that our special ed communities receive their services. They do. And without having to fight them, without having them feel like they need to come in with a lawyer or, or, or this or that, just so that they can be, get the basic services that their child requires.
Yeah. So I've, I've passed enough time that I can bury a budget question in there, because I know everybody hate, I know everybody loves talking about budgets. You know, it's, it's always the, you know, the, it's like, brings the eyeballs to the conversation, right? So LAUSD's budget, huge budget, and they distribute a huge portion of its funding for high-need students through the Student Equity Needs Index, SENI, or SENI. And this is an index which uses, as you're aware, includes school health measures, measures of neighborhood violence, and other non-traditional statistics. The idea is that, you know, in a district where, you know, most of the students are low-income, LAUSD can target the money at schools to have the help, that, that need, that have the most students to help overcome the most extreme challenges. Now, the, the district recently commissioned an analysis that, that said overall, SENI spending didn't have a measurable impact on, on student outcomes. So my question for you is, when we're looking at this budget and about how LAUSD spends its dollars to help high-need students, does the district need to change the Student Equity Needs Index? And if so, what, what needs to change in how the district is, is spending those resources?
That's a good question. That's a good question. I, I think we, we, the, the Student Equity Needs Index, I think it's a good way, I think it, it's, I think it's a good approach to bringing equity, to providing equity to our students. If we could expand it even better. Was it because I think our students, especially in our most vulnerable communities, need from those, from those funds? I, I think we have to be persistent. I think we have to be persistent with those funds. I know, I know you and I had a conversation not too long ago, and I said that, that simply throwing money at our students is not enough, right? It's the delivery, right? You have to make, you have to inspire our students and communities to believe that you're not only throwing money their way, but what you're doing for them carries meaningful thought, and it carries the, the correct intent. The fact that you are there for them to provide the services that they need. And I think that is what we need to do better with, with, with the Student Equity Needs Index. We need to make sure that the delivery is more compassionate, it's more in tune with building relationships, and making sure that people, that our communities understand that, that the services we're providing with those funds are meant to empower them, so that they can have meaningful effects within those communities.
This is another budget question, but it's more than a budget question, obviously. It's about school police. The district, and it's a budget question because in 2020, the, the school district removed 35% of the school police department's budget and redirected that money into the Black Student Achievement Plan. Now, you know, so this was a, a plan to create more dedicated services for black students, of course. But the recent death of a student on the campus of a high school in Hollywood from a fentanyl overdose has prompted figures like LAPD Chief Michael Moore to urge the district to reconsider these cuts. So, should the school district have police officers on the district payroll? And if so, what should their role be?
My vision for, for LAUSD is a police-free campuses. That's what my vision is. And I think the only way we get there, because we're, we're in a situation, I think, where we're, we're very fearful. Our parents are very fearful. And rightfully so. They're, they're always thinking about the safety of their, their students, their, their children. But I think we got to move away from the fear, and I think we need, we need to, in order for us to get to the, to that, to realizing that vision of, of police-free campuses, I think we need to provide more restorative measures- think we need to provide more restorative measures to deal with our, with our, with our students, right? We need to provide those services that allow our students more opportunities, more options. And what I say is we, we need to deliver for our students the hope of second chances and not allow them to face the wrath of a criminal justice system that far too often is harsher on our students of color. And when we provide those services for our students, right? Until we completely fund those services and we are able to say, we are providing all these things for our risk youth, until then, we have to keep police officers, but we keep officers on, that are trained and willing to engage our students in a manner that's not punitive, that deals with creating opportunities for our students after school, during school, or at-risk students. That's what we, that's what the pursuit, that's what the, the vision should be and that's what we should aim for. In the long run, of course, and we talked about earlier about being patient, we have to be patient. If we are not, we're going to keep doing this, oh, we need police and, and run with that fear because that's what we do best.
Okay, so you say police off of campuses, but there is a role for police and you just sort of suggested that it involves what sounded to me like an on-campus role. So help me reconcile those things here because what you said is that we want to have police who are willing to engage with students on a non-punitive level. What does that look like and where do those interactions take place?
What I meant was until we fully provide all the services for our students, we, we engage them with restorative measures and we provide them with the services that they need, whether they are social, emotional services, until we do that fully and we as a district can say, we're, we've, we do this for our kids, until we do that completely, we can still employ, we have to employ police officers, but we employ police officers in a man, to, to provide or engage your students in a manner that is not punitive, that is more in tune with the, there's a role for them to play if they want to, of course, right? They, they can cut, they can be part of the, of the learning of the school community in that way. I, I know we can have them even make sure that they, that the outside of our schools are safe. They could work with LAPD, make sure that drugs aren't coming into our schools, violence is not coming into our schools, right? There's a role that they, they can play, but we also have to recognize that we have to deliver these services for our students. And that's how, that's how I envision a police free, police free campuses. That's what I, that's what I envisioned.
So the, so what I'm hearing is, you know, we need more restorative services for students in general. We shouldn't have, you know, the, the overall idea is we shouldn't have police as part of those services and, and on our campuses and in an ideal future. In the meantime, they can be because there's going to be some period of transition and there, the, a clear yes role, we should, the district should have some police officers to do things that are off campuses, like keeping, you know, threats outside the school campus, off of campus. When do we get to the police free future? Like, like how far away do you see that as being? Like, is this something that we can get to during a four-year term? Is it something that we can do in less time than that? Is it going to take more time than that? If that's the future, how do we get there? That's, I mean, activists are going to want to know the answer to that question because this has been a, an ongoing point for them is we don't want them here yesterday.
But we also have to understand that, and I always talk about the power we play as adults and in, for our students. We're, we have, we play a very powerful role and we have to come to terms with that. And sometimes I, I feel that we, we as adults want to find an extrin, an outside, an outside entity to blame for what's going on with our children. And I think that's where the fear arises and that's why we're so caught up in thinking we need police officers in our schools. The long run, it could be within four years, it could be longer, but we have to stay committed. We can't, we can't say, oh, it's not working, let's stop because we have to stay committed. That is, I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful and we have to, right? But it takes, I think it takes a collective shift in the way we, we, we approach policing, the way we approach restorative measures for our children and the humanity in which we, we treat our, our children. And I, and I think sometimes what, as a parent, I'll tell you this, sometimes when we think about criminality, we never think about our children. We always, we always think about it being someone else, a criminal is someone else. But we have to start thinking that every kid in this, in our communities belongs to us. That's the only way we're ever going to solve the problem of our children looking for ways to fill voids that are not being met by us, the adults, whether at home, at school, so.
We're going to get to your Q and A in a second, so if you've got any last minute questions, pop them in the chat. And I want to end with one last question about the news that we've had this week about redistricting, actually, you know, because there's been this controversy with school, school board, city council president, Nury Martinez resigning today from the city council over racist remarks that involved also fellow city council members Kevin DeLeón and Gil Sadio. Those, those comments, obviously the, the racist portions of those shocked, but those comments were actually about the redistricting process and how, you know, there's, that is a process that involves a city appointed, you know, in LAUSD, both city and district appointed representatives drawing these maps that then go to the city council and they're drawn that way. And, and the, the calls for resignation have also been accompanied by calls for an independent commission to oversee that redistricting process instead of the one that's currently controlled by the council. Would you join those calls and say, yes, we need a, a redistricting, an independent redistricting commission? And if not, are there any other changes that you think that the, the city should undertake in how LAUSD electoral districts are drawn?
First, I want to say that I, I am in line with calling for the resignation of those three individuals who decided that, that in, in their speech, they decided there are, the members of our communities are pawns. And that's the danger we run when we politicize education too, right? In my mind, the school board should not be a political institution, but it is, right? But that's, those are the dangers we run where we start looking at community members as pawns that we can shift to make sure that, you know, they meet our ends and sometimes our ends is to stay in power. And that's more important than delivering services and delivering meaningful solutions to the problems and issues that our communities face. And I do, we should, I do agree that we should have an independent commission that deals with redistricting, right? And, but I, well, when I talk about that, I also want to say that that independence should come with community input. It should be the community deciding what the district should look like, what voter blocks should look like. And I, yeah, I agree with, with an independent commission to, to handle that.
All right. Let's get to some of your questions here from the audience. The first one that I have on my list here, Marvin, is what kind of power should the teachers' union have? You're a UTLA member, you know, what kind of power should the teachers' union have?
They should have the power to bargain. They should have the power to bargain on behalf of its members. They play in, the union plays an important role to making sure that the working conditions for its members are optimal. And I think that's the power it should have, just like any other, just like the power that the superintendent and the board wields, they have the power to engage their, its members, the community and bring forth solutions that key, take, take into consideration what our communities are demanding. So that's the power I think the union should have.
The, I mean, the acceleration days fight in some ways was a demonstration of the teachers' unions, you know, enduring influence. I mean, they sort of, you know, said, wait, 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 stop. And they, and they, through that negotiating process, affected change that they wanted to see. Another union stepped up, the, the district's second largest union, SEIU, and stood up and said, wait, like, we were never consulted. We're also important. We are, you know, many of us are parents in this district. We preferred the old plan. Is, you know, it, does, I mean, and I think that they would sort of counter and say like, that sometimes teachers' union interests trump all other interests in the district and sometimes to the employment, to the detriment of other employees in the district. I mean, does, is there a, is there a, a reason to maybe not listen to UTLA all the time? Is kind of what I'm building to is the question.
I mean, UTLA is, I think it has the most influence from all the unions in the district. I, I hear that some of these unions are complaining, but I don't hear them complain when there's a me-too clause, whatever the union bargains for better pay for its members because it goes to them too. And I understand that they are, they were in favor of the old way, right? But that's where I tell you, the union should have the power to bargain and that was them flexing that muscle. They, they were able to bargain for what they thought its members, because ultimately the people who were affected by, by acceleration days were going to be teachers, teachers in the classroom, teacher's workload being added to, right? That ultimately that's what, that was. And the teachers were clear. They surveyed us and we were clear. We said, no, we're not about that. No one consulted us. We need to feel, again, going back to be feeling that we, what we have to contribute matters. And that is how we get to deliver all these opportunities that we want to deliver for our students, right? When all of us feel that what we have to contribute matter, we'll make better decisions.
So the, the other point about teachers' union power is that during the pandemic, you know, there was this, there were notes that were leaked from the, or not, not leaked, I should say, they were disclosed, I believe through a lawsuit and found a discovery that showed that, that basically when UTLA balked at the idea of having a little bit more engagement during distance learning, the district basically folded and they said, and they did not challenge UTLA during those negotiations. And that drew a lot of heat from folks who felt like the school district needed to say like, wait, we need more, we, you know, we're stuck in this distance learning mode. We need to have a little bit more of a full experience. Was that an opportu, I mean, like now we're sort of dealing with these issues of learning loss and also research that suggests the longer you stayed closed, you know, the, the more, you know, harms accrued, especially to, to, to black and Latino students. I mean, so like, was that an opportunity to maybe say like, wait, 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 you know, like, we actually need to do something different here? Was that a moment where standing up and saying, what the teachers' union wants here, I, I get it, but like, we need something different in this moment? Was that a missed opportunity?
Well, I think that when, when you, it's time to bargain and you, you want to come to an agreement, both, I think both sides have to give in sometimes. And, but also when you feel like you're being taken advantage of, right? The likelihood that you're going to give in is, it's not high. So when, when the, the district, sorry, when, when the, when the union pushed back on the district wanting to come back, what the, what UTLA was seeing and what we are seeing as members, and I know I talked about that in my opening statement, I said, when I looked at the faces of those students, right? What they needed was something different, right? But also they needed to be, they needed to stay safe. And at that time, we had just started the, the vaccine mandate and not everyone was vaccinated. And of course, we have vulnerable, vulnerable communities within the school, our special ed students, they're vulnerable, more so than other students. So we needed to, we, we looked at that and we said, no, there's got to be, we have to wait. We have to pause for the safety of our students, for the safety of, of its members. We have to, we have to pause.
Okay, let's see. If you shut, okay, here's the next question. If you shut down charter schools, what happens to all of the students who attend those schools? What about the teachers and staff? The question is, will you lay them off? I mean, the, the answer is, is not that you as the district would lay them off, but you know, it would technically, you know, like, the, the district by the act of shutting down the school, they, they get laid off, right? So I mean, can you speak to that impact? I, I mean, that I think they're getting at here is we talk about shutting down charter schools, but, but that has a community impact as well.
That, I think that has to do also, I mean, we talked about enrollment earlier and if those schools are shutting down, the students are going to come, let's, let's make sure that they wind up in the neighborhood schools. And if those, and those teachers, we are talking about facing, confronting difficulties and finding qualified teachers to come and, to come teach at our schools. Maybe we could bring those qualified teachers into our classrooms. From experience, I tell you that we have amazing individual teachers working in charter schools too. They have, they, they, no one goes into teaching thinking about, oh, I'm just going to do it for the money. No, they go in because they want to make, they want to make a difference in the lives of their students. That is not going to change if this, if this teacher coming out of a charter school is hired by the district, that doesn't change. They bring their services, they bring their heart and their good faith into our classrooms in the neighborhood schools. So that has an enrollment effect. We bring more students into our, into our neighborhood schools and we also hire teachers.
You mentioned hiring teachers. That's a perfect segue to this other question, which is, would you recommend to your own students that they think about becoming a teacher in LAUSD?
Of course, of course I would, because I, I think that, that, and earlier I said the power that, and it's, it comes with a lot of understanding that, that the power that we, that, that we have in influencing and in the differences that we can make in the lives of our students. When I became a teacher, I did so, I was in, getting ready to be deployed into Iraq and Kuwait. And I found myself in a situation where I frankly didn't want to be. Nobody wants to go to war. And I, I told myself, I, you know, when I get out of here, if I get out of here, what I want to do is I want to be, I want to be a teacher. That's what I said and I hung on to that. And that's what inspired me to and motivated me to come back, to go back to school and to make sure that, that, that it wasn't just about me. It was, because you always want to leave a legacy, not only with your, with your kids, but with the kids that you are around. To me, being a teacher is a very rewarding experience. The, I've, I, I tell my students all the time. I said, you guys do more for me than I can ever do for you. So yes, I would totally and definitely encourage my students to become teachers.
Let's see. This is another question that, you know, you lose a lot in, 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 you know, in text, you lose tone and you don't get the implication of this question. So I'm just going to read it flat. Someone in the chat notes that Kelly has UTLA's endorsement. Why don't you? That's the, that's the question. That's it.
UTLA endorsement to me doesn't matter. I'm not here, I'm not here to appease the powers that be. I'm not here to, to, to try to have people align, I mean, institutions like UTLA align to me. What I'm here for is I'm here for my students. And if my message rings, has, has, means anything to, to my students and is something that I could do for my communities, that's enough for me. We're running a campaign that's, you know, maybe a couple thousand dollars, but I'm not afraid of that. I think when you align yourself with, with, everybody wants to align themselves to power, right? You can't blame them for wanting to, to endorse Kelly Gonis. At, to a certain level, it takes a level of fear, of fear to, to align yourself because you think that, that that person is going to give you something that I'm not going to be able to give you, right? But part of my message is to understand that, and when I talk to students that way too, is that my relationship to another person can't be a transactional one. It has to be one that is genuine and is not based on fear, is because I want to do something for you. So if Kelly Gonis has the endorsement of, of UTLA, so be it. That doesn't stop me from being a proud union member. I, I believe in, in empowering our teachers. I believe that. I, if I get on the board, that's exactly what I'm going to do. I began this, this forum by saying, I want to do something more for my students. And I also said, I want to do something more for my fellow teachers.
One last question for you. I swear this is an actual audience question because our counter programming tonight is game two of Dodgers Padres. And at last check, the Padres actually lead four to three in the seventh. And because we're homers, that's bad, right? Okay, so that's baseball. Here's a softball question. Thank you for that. An audience member wants to know, Marvin, who is your favorite Dodgers player? There is a right answer to this question, so.
My, my favorite Dodgers player, oh, hands down, Mookie Betts.
Ah, okay.
Mookie Betts. Whenever we, whenever we watched Mookie Betts, that guy conducts himself on the field with such, such great character. such, such a great character. He embodies on that field what I think all of us have to embody for our students. And that's having, you know, he looks like he enjoys what he does, he looks positive all the time, he looks like he's an amazing teammate. And he looks like everything he does on that field is for the benefit of that team. So I think I can relate to that, because what I want to do is in benefit of my team. And my team is my students, our students, our parents, and our community members.
Very good teacher answer, connecting the answer to the thesis statement of the question. Very, but you didn't get the answer right. The answer is Brewster Graterol, who came up through the Minnesota Twins farm system.
Oh, I could have said.
It's the only correct answer.
Sorry, I could have said Roberto Clemente, which grew up in the Dodger system, and then they hit him, but.
There you go. I didn't know that, actually. I'm, but I'm not a born and bred Dodger fan. All right. Marvin Rodriguez is running for board District Six in the LA Unified School District, and we are wrapping up our forum with him this evening, as we do during any candidate roundtable with an opportunity to give a closing statement. You have two minutes, and you can begin whenever you're ready.
This message is for my students and all the students in LAUSD. This message is for the teachers, my fellow teachers, parents, administrators, support staff, everybody who has any say or any, or any influence in educating our children. I want us to remember how powerful a role we play in uplifting and empowering our children. And I want us to remember that we can use that power to create learning opportunities, meaningful learning opportunities for our students that are going to last for them a lifetime. I want to remind all of us that we, that we can, that we can be the models for our students that we want for our own kids. And that's, we have to model, we have to model characters of honesty and courage. But most importantly, we must model love for our students, so that they feel comfortable and understanding and knowing that what they have to contribute to that classroom or to their communities or to the school is important as what anybody else has to contribute. That's the empowerment we can deliver to our students. And that's what I want our parents, our teachers, our community members, and any adult that has an influence in our students, that we have the power to influence our students. And we have to believe in creating relationships with one another so that we can model that for our students and see change in the lives of our students.
All right. This has been a live conversation, part of our voter game plan, our newsroom's guide to help you make an informed vote ahead of the November election. You can read that right now at laus.com/vote. And there you can see profiles of the candidates, learn more about what each position does, and even see information about campaign finance. So check it out right now at laus.com/vote. My sincere thanks to Marvin Rodriguez for joining us here tonight for KPCC and LAUS. I'm Kyle Stokes. Have a good evening.